Call the meeting order. City Council Meeting of October 4th, 2010. Roll call.
Mayor Heike. Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amen. Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlee.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? If none, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Anybody want to speak to anything on there? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go to the scheduled hearing for rezoning lands from R2 to limited business. And Bruce, are you handling that?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Reese, members of the council. The city received an application from Craig Lee's requesting that the property at 1950 19th Avenue Southwest be rezoned from R2 One and Two Family Residential to LB Limited Business. The proposal is that the structure be lived in by a professional who would also offer or would also offer business services at that location and would be planning to have several employees. The proposal is consistent with the latest comprehensive plan that calls for 19th Avenue Southwest to become a corridor for medical and professional uses. The rezoning has been approved by the planning commission. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Okay. Questions from Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'll move staff's recommendation that we ordnance, adopt the ordinance, give it a number, and...
It's a hearing first to take public...
Oh, excuse me. That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to open the hearing to the public. I apologize.
Yeah.
I'm new at this. All right. Are there any comments from citizens in regards to this zoning? Okay. If not, then I'll bring it up to the council.
Close the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Close the hearing. Close the hearing and bring it up to the council.
Here we go.
Ron.
Thank you. Now I'll move staff's recommendation to adopt the ordinance, give it a number, and publish it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm really doing well tonight. Rolling right along here.
Councilmember Reese.
Ordinance.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next item is a presentation on the Yellow Ribbon City designation. And we've heard about it. I would also draw your attention to the banner on the side. And Trish Appeldorn, I believe, you're going to speak to this?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us. Was it September 22nd, 23rd? City of Wilmer was designated a Yellow Ribbon City by the governor of the state of Minnesota. We were awarded the proclamation, and I can read it if you'd like, but I did include it in your agenda, so if you'd like me just to bypass that, I necessarily don't have to read it. Do you do have it, or...
Maybe...
It's a good idea.
Maybe it should be read for the public's interest.
Wonderful. Whereas the state of Minnesota proclamation, whereas the men and women of our armed forces are being called to duty with increasing frequency, in addition to remembering their courageous service, we must not forget the unsung heroes of war on terror. Their spouses and family members, who many sacrifices support the defense of this great nation, and whereas the spouses and families of our deployed service members bear an enormous burden of concern and support for their loved ones in harm's way, while continuing to perform the daily duties needed to sustain their families on the home front, and whereas many cities throughout the country display yellow ribbons and flags and supported the brave men and women serving abroad in the United States Armed Forces, and whereas Wilmer, a Minnesota city that encourages its military members and spouses, giving them peace of mind knowing they have this appreciation, love, and support of this community, and whereas the Yellow Ribbon City campaign honors communities with exceptional records of caring for their military members and families through various programs and public works, and recognizes individuals in these communities who have sworn and uphold this standard for future military members and families. It is with this commitment to excellence that Wilmer will serve with honor and distinction as a Yellow Ribbon City. Now therefore, I, Tim Palenti, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby join the Minnesota National Guard in proclaiming the city of Wilmer as a Yellow Ribbon City.
Signed by our governor.
Signed by Governor Tim Palenti. We had, I believe, about six people from Wilmer join us to receive this proclamation. Commissioner Dawkin, myself, Kami Nelson, Conrad Bostrom, and Deb Kruger all accepted this proclamation on behalf of the city of Wilmer. We have all worked very hard with gaining this Yellow Ribbon Award and proclamation and want to thank the city councilmen and the people in the community for helping us get this proclamation for the city of Wilmer. With that, I want to just bring up that our Yellow Ribbon signs. And in your packet, you had a sign, but I did receive another one from Stillwater, what they would look like. I'm not sure how many signs are coming into the city of Wilmer. Mick, are you aware of that?
There would be five.
The cost of these signs are $62.95 apiece, and it would just make citizens aware while they're coming into Wilmer that we are designated as a Yellow Ribbon City. So just for your consideration, maybe for future reference, if any know of anyone that would like to participate in purchasing one of the signs, I know I myself would be willing to purchase a sign, so...
Okay, so this is a sign that would go in place of the signs that are there now?
No, it's just a little addition to the bottom of the signs.
Okay.
The city of Wilmer sign.
Oh, I see. I see the bottom. Okay, I didn't understand it when you held it up before.
Yep.
All right.
And Mick, you said there was five?
Yeah.
You believe?
So you're looking for people that will...
Would be willing to purchase a sign, or if there's maybe a business out there that would be willing to purchase the signs.
Okay. All right. Well, we can be proud as a city that we've been designated, and that is a lot of work by you and everybody else, Kami and Conrad, in regards to getting this proclamation and designation for the city of Wilmer to be a Yellow Ribbon City in it. Having been, you know, there's a number of us, I think, up at this table that are veterans ourselves, and we also have children that are in the armed services at present. And having that designation and the care and support of our whole community for the families, especially in times like this where they're missing their child's birthday or their first softball game, or whatever it may be, or maybe even the birth of their These families do need the support, and Yellow Ribbon will be there for them. That's wonderful.
That is correct, and we do, we are so fortunate to be living in a city and actually a county that is very military friendly, and they always have a place to go, so we're very fortunate.
Anybody want to comment or ask a question? Bruce?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just like to say thank you for everything you did to bring this proclamation to the city of Wilmer and all your work you put into it. You know, I for one did have children in the military and have served both at home and abroad as well. And I know it's a, it's a lot of stress on a family when you have a member in the service. Just thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dawkin, you were at the, at the event. Maybe you want to make some comments.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Again, personally, I can't thank Trish and Conrad Bostrom and Kami Nelson-Trowisha for their efforts, but I think we go back to Governor Palenti and his insights into how important it was to start a reintegration program in our state because we have so many National Guard and Reserve individuals that have been a part of the war for the last eight years. And the adjutant general played a huge role, but Chaplain John Morris is the individual that really, I think, got things rolling with respect to making sure that military personnel were reintegrated properly. They went back at 30-day, 60-day, 90-day intervals because there is so much, suicide is epidemic within the military today, and post-traumatic stress disorder is, is really difficult. And so even our Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Admiral Mike Mullen, on October 1st said that communities and veterans can help each other. The United States owes a debt of, a debt to its veterans and their families that the American communities and their leaders can help repay, the chairman said. And he was in Tucson, Arizona. He said that military veterans and their families are an extraordinary group, and he encouraged local leaders to find ways to employ them and put their abilities to use. And I think that this Yellow Ribbon designation is a, is a huge accomplishment for our city. Again, Minnesota has 410,000 veterans. That's a lot of veterans when you consider that there are 24 million in our country. When you look at spouses and children and grandchildren, that's probably about a fifth of our population that are veteran-related. So we, we are privileged to have so many veterans that live in our community and have done so many great things. And there are at least three of us on the council that can say that we are veterans.
Anything else, anybody? Well, congratulations.
Thank you. It was a great accomplishment.
And we appreciate it very much, and the recognition of Wilmer as being designated as a Yellow Ribbon City.
Thank you. We really should give a lot of credit to Kami Nelson, who could not be here tonight because she really started this whole process, so...
I know Kami has a passion to the extreme.
Yes, she does.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you. All right. All right, the next item is another proclamation, and it's on domestic violence. And I guess I'd just like to cover a couple things before I read the proclamation, and then I'm also going to call on Connie Schmoll from, I'm going to call Shelter House, but because I'll let you explain the changes, Connie. But I've done a little bit of looking into domestic violence since this proclamation was coming out of designating October as Domestic Violence Month. And I find that it's a, it's a pattern of intimidation and abuse that batters use to control their partners. And, you know, I guess it's easy for us to understand that in domestic abuse, there's, there's, there are beatings, and the physical part of it heals, but, and the arguments, and, but however, the emotional wounds, they erode the victim's self-worth for the rest of their lives. And abusers typically act out of need for control, and they abuse, the abuse become, abused become imprisoned by that manipulation and domination, and sometimes even believing that they deserve this kind of cruel behavior. I checked with our sheriff and our chief of police, and in 2009, just to help you put it in perspective, we had within the city in 2009, 442 responses to domestic violence, just within our city, 442. And in the county, we had 165. So far this year, we've had 332 within our city and 116 within our county. So, you know, it, it's right here at home, and we have Shelter House who serves victim services to these, to the abused. As a concern as a city and as a city council, on the public safety side, I questioned both the sheriff and our police chief in regards to what does this take as far as services and time? In every domestic call, whether it's the sheriff's department or the police department, two officers, two officers respond. It is a difficult situation to walk into, and I, sometimes very dangerous. And there are hours of paperwork, many hours and resources consumed by the crime of the domestic violence. The Shelter House is a real asset to our law enforcement as far as, like I said before, providing victim services beyond the law enforcement contact. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to call on Connie Schmoll, and Connie's going to tell us about an event and also some changes at the Shelter House. So the proclamation. Whereas violence against women and children continues to become more prevalent as a social problem due to the imbalance of power due to gender and age, whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people but across all economic, racial, and social barriers and supported by social indifference. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting women and children and society as a whole. Whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by Shelter House, newly-named Safe Avenues and domestic violence programs throughout the nation, I Doug Reese as Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Wilmer do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs to work toward the elimination of personal and institutional violence against women. Connie, why don't you come up and introduce yourself and share with us some of the changes and activities?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Doug Reese, and city council members, and thank you for making that proclamation in the city of Wilmer, Minnesota, to proclaim Domestic Violence Month in October 2010. You're following in the steps of many community leaders, state leaders, and even our own President Barack Obama. On October 1st, he proclaimed October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in his proclamation, he also stated that it's been 16 years since the passage of the Violence Against Women Act, VAWA. And we have broken the silence surrounding domestic violence in many communities, and we've made a big impact on the number of cases of domestic violence. But we still have a critical issue facing us when one out of every four women will still experience domestic violence and sexual assault at some point in their life by an intimate partner or spouse. Barack Obama, our president, also stated that ending domestic violence requires a collaboration of efforts involving every part of our society. And you alluded to the fact that we need law enforcement. They respond. We need our sheriff's departments, our city council members, our county, county, our city attorneys and our county attorneys. And they do, they work hard on behalf of domestic violence. I do want to thank our law enforcement that's here tonight. Even our fire department, they've responded to the shelter many times, too, so. And to our county attorneys and city attorneys, they really work hard to make a difference and impact domestic violence cases across the nation. I do want to announce Shelter House has gone through a big change, and we've changed the name of our organization from Shelter House to Safe Avenues. Along with that, we have a brand-new logo, we have a new mission statement, a new tagline. And as you can see in our new logo here, we are an organization that provides safety much more than safe shelter. We're also an organization that provides advocacy and support and healing for men, women, and children who are victims of domestic violence. We also work with men. We have our safe shelter, we have advocacy programs, we have programs for victims of sexual assault, which is new in the last five years. We also work with children who are impacted by domestic violence because they witness it in the home, and some of them are victims themselves. We have a visitation center, which is one of the highest referred-to organizations by our courts when there's children involved in the homes with this domestic violence, a safe parenting time center called Harmony Visitation Center. Our new name can cover that. Shelter House is now one of our programs. We haven't lost that name. It's just the name of our shelter program. Our shelter program is the only shelter in 18 counties in southwest Minnesota, and still 51% of the people who stay in the shelter are from Canduah County. We work with 600 to 700 families every year who are direct victims of domestic violence or sexual assault. Safe Avenues also shows that there are many choices, there are many avenues a person can take to find safety in their lives. If you look at our logo, it has four colors on it. The color purple is, stands for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and you're going to see purple ribbons wrapped around our city all over, as well as the yellow ribbons in this next month to signify that we all care about domestic violence. The blue in our logo is for sexual assault. It's a sexual assault nationally-known awareness color. Orange is for parenting time centers, and blue is for child abuse. So we have all four colors on our logo. And if you look closely at our logo, there's an intersection there. There's the paths and the roads, so it's a very fitting logo for Safe Avenues, the new umbrella name for Shelter House. We do have events coming up, and this wonderful proclamation read by Mayor Pro Tem Reese will be done again tomorrow night in a community setting out at Robins Island. You're welcome to come to that. Our city and community members are welcome to come. It'd be wonderful if we had hundreds of people there saying, "Let's remember the victims, let's honor the survivors, and let's celebrate what's being done in our community to stop domestic violence and help the victims." That will take place at Robins Island. It's a beachside candlelight vigil, starting at 6 o'clock, to remember the, those who have lost their lives and to honor our survivors. We also have Purple Night Lights all through October. You can purchase a purple light bulb at Safe Avenues and light that on behalf of Domestic Violence Awareness. We have a 5K run coming up on the 16th. We have open houses at our office in Chippewa County, we have one in Siff County, and one in Renville County. And we have appreciation breakfast at the shelter for our partners and supporters. So there are many events. I do encourage you to get involved, especially to come out to Robins Island tomorrow night. Thank you again for the proclamation and for caring.
Thank you, Connie, and thank you for being here. And carry it back to your board. Thank you so much for what Shelter House has meant and the, what Safe Avenues will mean within our community and outside of our community.
Thank you.
I don't know if anybody's got any questions for you, Connie. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Connie, for coming. You had stated that 50% of your clients, I'll call them clients, are from Canduah County. Where are some other places they come from? Another 49%. I mean, other states or just the state of Minnesota, or...
Sure. 51% of those who stay in our shelter, which is about 100 people, 100 families a year, are from Canduah County. We get the majority from this 18-county area in southwest Minnesota. In fact, we are state-funded for eight beds in our shelter. We have 16. We can have six families at a time. Until we have eight beds full, we really take anybody from anywhere because that's the criteria with the state funding we get. After we have eight beds, we prioritize the 18-county area. There's a lot of communities in that 18-county area that wish they had their own shelter. If they did, families wouldn't have to leave their home, they wouldn't have to leave their jobs, they wouldn't have to leave their schools. And some choose not to leave that in order to come to safe shelter. I think that's one of the reasons that we are 51% from Canduah County. It's more accessible for people in our own community to go to safe shelter.
What's an, is there an average stay that a family or gal would stay there? Is it two weeks, five weeks, a month, or...
The average stay is 18 days. We have people who stay for three, four months, and we have many people who only stay for a night or two. If they're attain an order for protection from the court systems, it's still a very dangerous time for them. In fact, the Minnesota Coalition for Battered Women puts out a homicide report each year, and in many of the cases where somebody was murdered in a domestic violence situation is when they were leaving the abusive partner, a very dangerous time for them. So when somebody gets a court order and makes a move to change what's going on, we do ask them to come and stay at the shelter for at least a day or two until the most dangerous period is over.
One final question. I'm assuming you do follow-ups on people that come to stay there?
Yes. Yeah, we have...
After they've left?
Yeah, actually a pattern where we will check with them in a day or two, and we'll check with them in a week, and in three weeks, and in six weeks, and in six months. Many times, they're hard to reach. They're in a system of hiding many times and moving around, so sometimes we can't get a hold of them. Sometimes they go back to the abusive situation and try it again. They often hope and believe that if they've made one move to change a situation, if they say, "No, I won't tolerate the abuse," that it'll stop, and so they do try it again and again. And sometimes it works, sometimes it does stop. Most of the time, it does not. So sometimes it's very hard to reach out to them and find them again afterwards, but for those, we do. Those who are successful and either the abusive partner gets help and changes, or they've separated in order to be safe, many give back. They give back to the community, they give back to our program, they work again for Safe Avenues, or they work in other places out in the community where they can share that there's help out there.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, city council.
Any other questions? I have one more. Safe Avenues.
Safe Avenues.
Has offices in Olivia, Montevideo, Benson, and Wilmer, right?
Exactly. They're good.
Okay. But the only shelter is here in Wilmer?
The only shelter for 18 counties in southwest Minnesota is here in Wilmer.
And the offices in those other cities that I mentioned?
Yes.
Can you tell me what, what takes place there?
Yeah, they do a lot of safety planning with people in our offices in Olivia, Benson, and Montevideo. They do court advocacy, they help them attain order of protection or harass restraining order. They help them to report to law enforcement to make sure law enforcement understands all that's happened in the situation and make some wise choices about charging. They work with the city attorneys and the courts when there are charges, when they need to go to court. A very dangerous and scary thing to do for the victim, but they need to be there to testify. We offer supplies and phone cards. We help them to change their address, change their locks on their doors, anything that it takes for safety planning for them to stay safe. Many of the people that need help but don't need shelter do stay with a family member or friend, or have an order for protection to have the abuser taken out of the home. It's not really any different than somebody staying in the shelter, they just don't need the shelter service. And the other 12 counties where we don't have programs do have offices, much like we have in Olivia, in Benson, and Montevideo.
And your financial support comes from?
We have the most complicated funding plan you could ever imagine, but we do get some state funding through the Department of Public Safety. We get some federal funds flowing through the state, some comes from the VAWA Act, Violence Against Women Act, some comes from VOCA, Victims of Crime Act, and some of that money is collected from large corporate crimes. It's handed down to serve victims of crimes, which is very fitting. We also do a gala every year. You're invited to come. It's a very fun event. We do raise some money for the shelter and for our programs at Safe Avenues. We have a lot of community partners who give from their own pocketbooks and from their hearts because they want to make a difference. They want to see victims have their life turned around and be able to give back. It's a lot of events. We're hoping to have a bike-athon in the spring. We have a couple bikers right here on the city council, so hopefully they'll join us for that.
We're hoping. All right, Connie, thank you very much for being here tonight, and see you tomorrow night.
All right, thank you. I am going to pass out just the information about our name change, so you all have that to share.
Okay. Okay. Maybe you want to just give it to Kevin? Thanks, Connie. Next item is the city council open forum. Kevin, did anybody sign up? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Finance committee report. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The first item on our agenda was a discussion of the mayor's proposed budget, and this was where we received public comments. No one was present at the meeting, but we did get an email, which was read, and it came from a concerned citizen suggesting the council consider contracting out some city services and that a task force be appointed to determine whether or not this might be cost-effective. That was referred to staff, and they will be reporting back with their thoughts at the first finance committee meeting in December. That was for information only. Second item also had to do with the 2011 budget. We continued our review of the mayor's proposed 2011 budget by considering the fund balances. Fund designations and level policies were, once again, received for information and will be available for discussion at the November 22 meeting. Finance Director Okens also reviewed the various groups of expenditures with the committee. We also had a little bit of a discussion on that November 22 budget meeting. It had been started at 5:00 a few years ago. We went to the Holiday Inn. Starting last year, we were at the, I think, at the fire station. And I think it would make sense to start that a little before 5:00. Nothing is set in concrete at this time, but we do have to receive the reports from the HRA, MUC, and Rice Hospital. And so I think for planning purposes, you should think about that starting about 3:00 that afternoon of November 22. Nothing's been firmed up on that, but for your own planning, you might pencil that in. That was all for information. Finally, we received the August Rice Trust Report. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Safety Committee report. Public Works Safety Committee met Tuesday, September 28. First item on the table was a criminal activity report from our police chief, and he went through recent criminal activity in the southeast sector of Wilmer, more specifically between First Street to Lakeland Drive and from Highway 12 to Wilmer Avenue. And there has been a number of letters and citizen concerns that have come to council members of the overabundance of serious crimes in this area. And each, the chief, as he outlined the criminal activity, he told the committee that each incident occurring in the last six weeks was separate cases, and there was no real tie-in to each case from one to another. And he included arrest information in his report. That was for information only. The second item was the Clean Water Revolving Fund Loan Agreement, and Rhonda Ray from Donin U. Associates was at our meeting, and she presented a change order to the loan agreement with the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority for funds under the Clean Water Revolving Fund Program. The agreement includes funding for Project 1017B, the decommissioning of our old wastewater treatment facility. This change order will separate this project into two phases, the first being the decommissioning of the existing wastewater treatment facility, the second is the decommissioning of both the Arby's and the Ortonblad lift stations, including the installation of the gravity connection from the Ortonblad lift station to the new Southern Interceptor. And then a motion was made, and I would introduce a resolution to approve the change order to the loan agreement with the Minnesota PFA Clean Water Revolving Fund and amend the city budgets accordingly.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please. Aye, Mr. Speaker. It's a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And one note with that, as we were talking about the changes and talking a little about the wastewater treatment facility, just one note that, I guess more for the public's, but maybe for some of the council members that weren't at the meeting, but for the public's information, as of Tuesday, the 28th, all flow has been directed to our new wastewater treatment facility, and the old wastewater treatment facility is shut down and is being cleaned up and going to be decommissioned. So many years of work, now in total function, our new wastewater treatment facility. So that is really quite exciting, to have that flow all directed to our new plant. The next item was in regards to Safe and Sober Grant. This is something that the city has participated in for years, and Chief Wifels is requesting permission to participate in the same program again. And as in the past, the city of Wilmer will be collaborating with the Candio High County Sheriff's Office, the Atwater Police Department, the Swift County Sheriff's Office, and the Benson Police Department. And this program allows for a concentrated effort on traffic safety. The total amount of the grant is $30,000. There's no local match, other than operational costs of our police vehicles, and that's the way it has been always in the past. So I would introduce a resolution to authorize the police department to enter into a grant agreement and authorize staff to execute agreements and amendments as necessary. We have a motion and a second. No questions, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The next item is in regards to a grant for reimbursement funds from the Minnesota Board of Firefighting Training and Education for our fire department in the amount of $9,400 to be used towards training of our firefighters. These training courses are planned to be completed by June of next year, and Chief Calvin is requesting permission to submit a final application and accept the funds. I would introduce a resolution to apply and accept the reimbursement funds, not to exceed $9,400, and adjust the fire department's 2010 and 2011 budgets accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
There was some miscellaneous discussions that were for information only in regards to future path projects and connections and street construction status and busing issues near Roosevelt School. That was the extent of the minutes. I would move to file the minutes. If there's questions, we can address them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to go back to item number one. I've been thinking about this a lot. The crime of whatever kind seems to be happening quite frequently in rental housing. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be important for us to look at rental housing like we look at multi-apartment living, where they have a program that's called Crime-Free Multi-Housing. The people can do background checks on those folks, and they can refuse, as I understand, to not rent to them. Why would we not want to at least look at doing something like that with respect to rentals when we have numbers of calls from a specific house on a specific street or avenue? And hold the landlords a little more accountable for who they are renting to?
This is a program that you've...
It's in force right now in Willow Run. All of the larger complexes, they have what's called Crime-Free Multi-Housing. Is it a form, Mick, or what is it called?
I'm not really sure.
I know the program exists. I think it's through the HRA maybe, right? But I think it's worth looking at with respect to rentals.
Yeah, I think that can be referred to a committee. On legality, I guess I'm thinking of, and whether or not that's something that...I think it should be looked into, but I'm questioning whether or not there can be that kind of subjectivity in rental. But it seems...like it could be discriminatory. I'm not sure. Jim, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I sit as a liaison on the HRA board, and all the HRA facilities are in this program. And I believe, is it Mary Lee Doran that's the staff person is at the police department? She meets with them, and they go over, I think it's Crime-Free Rental Housing, I think is the name of it. And a lot of the private sector apartments belong to that also. I know that Willow Run does, and apartments on Lakeland Avenue. And it might be worth looking into. I don't think there's any legal issues with it, but I suggest we discuss it at a Public Works meeting.
So this would be something that each, I mean, if I owned a house or two, I would have to adopt this?
I don't think it's a matter of adopting. I think it's participating in the program, participating in it, and you can participate as much as you want or as little as you want, I guess, but they do meet and go over lighting, security, background checks for potential renters, things like that. And Mary Lee brings out forms with all these questions and related to safety and renting.
Well, maybe we ought to take this for information and maybe refer it to public safety, and maybe staff can look into this a little.
We'll do some research on it and report back to committee.
Would appreciate it. Thank you, Jim. Anything else? We didn't pass that yet, did we? Kevin?
Not the motion.
Aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of Final Plat Cambridge Second Edition.
Mayor Protem Reece, members of the council. Cambridge Second Edition is a plat being developed by KLC of Wilmer. The plat is south of Oxford Drive Southeast and west of 15th Street Southeast. It is a 14-lot plat, and four of the lots are splits of existing duplexes. This plat is part of a planned unit development that will surround the large stormwater retention pond that was built out there probably five years ago now. And the planning commission has approved the final plat with several conditions regarding existing assessments and some stormwater requirements. Staff recommends approval of the final plat with the understanding that signatures will be withheld until those final conditions have been met by the developer.
So we're looking for approval of the plat?
That's correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of Resolution Election Judges for November 2nd General Election. Kevin?
Mayor Protem, members of the council, pursuant to state statutes, we need to adopt a resolution informing the public who the election judges are in their various precincts. They are listed there for your perusal, and it is staff's recommendation that you adopt the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Questions, concerns? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm just curious, do you have to be a citizen of Wilmer to be on these?
Candio High County for about eight years. Prior to that, it was. So for the past eight or 10 years, you had to be in Candio High County.
Okay, so then people on these, or in each precinct, they don't have to belong to that ward, then? You can come from the city of Candio High and then sit on one of these in Wilmer?
We begin with lists from the DFL and the Republican Parties when they hold their caucuses, and they submit those to the auditorium, and we need to put them on, and then we call people in Wilmer, and then last resort is we move out to get them. We've only had a few that aren't Wilmer many times, some Atwater and so forth, but they were in Wilmer at one time and moved to a lake or something, but they were great judges, so we kept them on. But as we turn over, we try to keep them in Wilmer.
So we don't have a problem getting judges for these in?
Oh, we have problems? We don't have a waiting list that we like. Many times we adopt this, and then someone will be, have a medical emergency at the end, and we have a couple people on the waiting list. It's always nice to have five or six on the waiting list.
As I understand it, they get paid also, right?
They get paid three different wages. Eight dollars if it's their first election, nine dollars if they are per hour now. Nine dollars if they've got experience, and 10 for a head judge.
Is this advertised anywhere, Kevin, or it's just, you don't put it in the paper?
Well, we don't, haven't been to that point. We've got the word out, or on the open-mic program, the word might go out, or through the DFL IR parties, it goes out, and we get the job done. But it's more than an hour's worth of work.
That's what they tell me. It's a day's more than a day's.
Long days, a lot of training.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And that is a roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Next is a resolution for certification of unpaid utility charges, charges as a lien. Kevin?
Mayor Protem, members of the council, once a year, the Utilities Commission offers hearings to those people who have unpaid utility charges, offering them the opportunity to come and explain what kind of circumstances may prevent them from making payment on their bills. This year, there's a larger list than we have ever had, and those are before you for your perusal. The commission offered those for September 22 meeting, I believe, and nobody asked to have a hearing. And so subsequent to that, they submit these to the city, and we put the legal addresses together that are on that list, and it is staff's recommendation that we adopt this resolution placing all of these charges against their respective parcels for collection in 2011.
Mayor Protem, introduce the resolution.
Mayor Protem, introduce the resolution. All right. Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Questions? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm just curious, Kevin, do we know what percentage of these are rentals or absentee landlords or of that nature? Are most of them owner-operated or occupied?
I should know this answer from rental. Zero would be rentals because the renter comes and makes the deposit and you can't come back against the landlord for that renter. And so we're going against these owned properties. I think by process of elimination, the answer is zero rentals. But staff should review that and get a firm answer for you.
Thank you, I was just curious.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes. The next is the committee meeting dates, finance? Mr. Mayor Protem, finance committee will meet Monday, the 11th at 4:45. And Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting Tuesday, the 12th at 4:45. How about Labor? Steve's not here. Is there any meeting for Labor? No. Community Development?
Yes, Community Development will meet October 14th, 4:45.
One announcement under miscellaneous, and that is that there's going to be a community-oriented policing and problem-solving meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Fire Hall and all citizens are invited to attend tomorrow. I was informed before the meeting started that we will not be closing the meeting as previously indicated. Marv? Do you have something?
Can I have some announcement?
Okay, okay. But we're going to adjourn...
Adjourn until a time.
Until we need to, but we need to find a specific time this, well, not this week. We can this week, but go ahead, Kevin.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, we are having a closed meeting with the attorney-client privilege. To do that, a requirement would be to have an attorney. Since we do not have one, that criteria is not filled. An acting city attorney, not a standing council member attorney. And there are concerns that, not critical on time, but I guess they asked to go over the mediation activities from the wastewater treatment land acquisitions. If there is no time to meet, you could make it the next time after the council, but it is recommended that we find a date this week or before that two-week period where we can meet and discuss these items with our attorney. Any day post 4:30. If you can't find one, I guess we go all the way to the next council meeting.
Post 4:30? Because I was gonna, earlier you and I had discussed possibly even noon.
And noon would probably work too, I guess. We've got to make sure the attorney is there and I guess if you could make any input as to, would the court keep him over noon?
Possible, always possible.
Always possible.
Not likely, but possible.
But not likely. Let's try to find the best thing, Mr. Mayor Protem, and we'll try to make it work. So...
I don't know, what works for everybody. I'm just looking at my calendar and I thought, you know, the sooner we get it done, the better in my estimation. And I was wondering if Wednesday noon, if people can make it, I don't know.
No, absolutely not.
You can't on Wednesday's noons. It'd have to be after 4:00 then, Bruce?
Yeah.
What is the, what does everybody want to do? Do you want to wait until the next council meeting, on the 18th? I mean, we've been sitting in this litigation for...
Can anybody meet at 4 o'clock before one of the announced meetings?
How that we could maybe do. Well, are you able to be there to the... By 4 o'clock? Rick?
Yeah.
Jim? Jim?
What day?
Well, either Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday would work for me, but Wednesday or Thursday won't.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good.
Think the Tuesday would work better.
Tuesday would work better? Okay. So we will go with Tuesday, the 12th at 4 o'clock.
That's assuming the city attorney is available.
Well...
If not, we will likely then wait until the council meeting.
Next council meeting. Sounds good. Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Okay?
Hey, Chief? Mr. Chairman, Mayor Protem?
Doug? Mr. Reese?
We will need to, well, what happens if it doesn't work out for Tuesday? They have to adjourn to a specific time?
Correct, to keep the meeting open without announcing anything. So then the three-day rule wouldn't even matter, the three-day announcement rule, so, which is beyond that. But the bottom line is, that should be the last action, so I guess we have to go back to the chief and then make a motion to adjourn.
Or if they just decide to do it at the next council meeting, we can adjourn this meeting and schedule it for the next agenda?
That's always an option, but this other option is better. Take the date and if...
You feel a little bit of urgency, Kevin?
It would be better to work on the details earlier than later. I think the plan is a good one. Let's just stay with the plan. Hope we have quorum and hope we have an attorney.
And if we don't have an attorney?
We just, there is no meeting and it goes to the next council.
And how do we adjourn this meeting?
Either one. Just, well, it'd adjourn by default then.
It would.
Sure, you'd have no quorum or no functional meeting. You have to have that attorney to close the door.
So when we adjourn, the motion would be to adjourn...
Until October 12th, 4:00 PM.
Which at that time will reconvene. Okay? All right? Or is it close or adjourn?
Adjourn.
It is? Okay, all right.
That's the right language.
Chief Calvin?
I certainly didn't mean to make a big issue out of making an announcement of our storytime at the fire station tomorrow night at 6:00. So that's our storytime. We do it with early childhood, family education. And 6:00 tomorrow at the fire station, come on over there, we will have something to eat for you. And then we also have the story that we will read to the youngsters. Also, just want to announce that one of our firefighters' wives has brain cancer and we're going to be doing a fundraiser for her on October 30th at Efree Church. So just those two quick announcements.
Thank you, Marv. Councilmember Christensen brought to my attention, I forgot that, is it tomorrow or is it Wednesday? Is it tomorrow? Utilities get to...
Tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. It is tomorrow. Tomorrow, okay, 4:00 to 6:30 is the annual dinner and appreciation for the municipal, Wilmer Municipal Utilities, and that will be at the Civic Center, okay? From, at the Civic Center from 4:00 to 6:30.
So you can go from the Civic Center to Robins Island to the fire station and get plenty to eat.
Get plenty to eat, yeah. And proclaimed too, so, all right?
And the concert series is tomorrow night too.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
Anything else? All right, Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was listening on open mic today when JP and Mick were talking and I know there was a question on streets in our street program. Is there, could we get an update on how things are going with the weather, the rain?
I'll let Holly give you an update on the status of our projects, but this is an opportunity for me to correct myself because when I was asked a question on open mic, I said, "I hope I'm not speaking," and then went on to answer the question and I misspoke. The question was, in a situation where we do a mill and overlay and spot replacement of curbing that is in need of replacement, does the homeowner that doesn't have any curb removed and replaced pay the same assessment as the homeowner who may have had replacement? And I said, gee, I guess I would think the assessments would be based on what actually took place in front of your property, and that is not the case on a mill and an overlay. We figure out the total cost of the project and then assess it out equally. And I hope the young lady who called and asked me that question is watching the program tonight. Otherwise, I'll try to clear it up at the next open-mic program, but Holly can give us a status report on the projects.
Holly?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. The street program is progressing at a slow pace, but 7th Street was being graded and the fill was being put in. The water main had been tested and okayed, so that grading work and filling has been taking place today. They've also done some grading on 14th Avenue today and hoping to keep progressing on that project. 12th Street Southeast, they're hoping to start removing some pavement and beginning on that. As far as the mill and overlay, those projects will hopefully be seeing some activity within the next two weeks with this nice weather. The other pieces of concern are Valley Brook that was cleaned up over the weekend. There are some structures and castings still that need to be cut in and adjusted, but they're working diligently to keep the project moving as best as we can.
All right. Mr. Mayor, as long as we're talking about streets, would you allow, and we have plenty of time here, would you allow me to talk a little bit about the Roosevelt Road and bus patterns? I noticed when I came back from being gone a few days, a series of emails that were talking about the bus patterns behind Roosevelt and complaints specifically from the people north and east of the new roadway that too many buses were going in that direction. And I just wanted to clear up what discussions took place when this road was built. Dr. Kiergert approached me early in the process and asked if the city would be in a position to include this roadway in our 2010 program. And after we discussed possibilities and design issues, we agreed to include it with the understanding that all of the buses, when leaving the roadway, would travel west to 22nd Street and then disperse either north and south from there. And I know that Dr. Kiergert talked to the bus company about this and I assumed, and Dr. Kiergert did as well, that that is exactly what would happen. We knew that there may be an exception, one, two, or three buses that might, for some reason, have to turn right and go through that residential area, but not a majority of the buses for sure. I talked to Dr. Kiergert about two weeks ago when Mr. Christensen contacted me. He had received a phone call or an email from someone who was concerned about the number of buses going east. Dr. Kiergert assured me that he was going to meet with the bus company and make sure that our understanding was intact. I never did participate in the discussions with the bus company, so I'm relying on what Dr. Kiergert told me. I try, then I came back from being away for a few days and I saw that series of emails. And I will contact Mr. Butto and let him know what the original verbal agreement was for traffic patterns. I called Dr. Kiergert's office this morning. He was not available and won't be until Wednesday. I talked to the principal at Roosevelt School who called the bus company and talked to them. And when she got back to me, she thought the best thing to do is wait until Dr. Kiergert returned to the office on Wednesday. But the original agreement, and it was all verbal, there were no written agreements, was that we knew that all of this bus traffic could not go through that residential area, so we made it a point when talking to the bus company about the new parking area for buses and ingress and egress, that they would leave and arrive to and from the west. So that's where we are today and as soon as Dr. Kiergert gets back, I'll find out from him what his discussions with the bus company were, unless we have some inside information here where we might get some assistance. But we're working on the matter and we know it's a concern. The principal at Roosevelt told me that in the morning, generally speaking, most of the traffic is coming into the roadway from the west, but she thought most of it leaving in the afternoon was going to the east. So we have some work to do, but our original commitment was to avoid that pattern as best we could.
Whenever possible.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mick. So then we need a motion to adjourn...
To the 12th? Until the 12th?
At 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM. So move.
So seconded.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting until Tuesday, the 12th at 4:00 PM. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries. We adjourn.